To open the meeting. And I am going to move to open a public hearing pursuant to RSA 674:57. To declare all land designated as special flood hazard areas by the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA in its flood insurance study for the county of Merrimack, New Hampshire, dated January 23rd, 2026.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Or as amended, together with the associated flood insurance rate map firm panels. We're going to read all the letters, numbers.
I don't think that's necessary.
As noted in the record dated January 23rd, 2026, or as amended to be part of the town of Canterbury zoning ordinance. Looking for a second.
I will second.
All those in favor.
I.
And then we'll just leave that open for a period of time. All right, why don't we go on to the department heads? Sam, you like to go first, right?
It should be great.
No words. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we're one short there, Chuck. Receivables listed by warrant. There hasn't been very much change. There's been a couple of small payments for small lots, but there hasn't been anything significant. Quickly doing the math, what is the old fellowship? That's almost $18,000, so.
And no contact?
No contact and no payment. There's another bill going to come out someday.
Yep. All right.
Yep, that's what we are for that.
Correct. I don't have some, any money?
Soon as we get a tax rate, we'll put out bills. We can just see how that goes.
When do we need to start following up on leveling?
Sooner rather than later. Because then we'll have everything prepared for when we have to go through this dating process, if we have to go through dating process.
Okay.
So I recommend that you guys do that sooner than later.
And Simbari? We haven't heard anything?
I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
Thanks, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Come on down.
Hold up.
Hey. Put the wall out on one piece of paper, because cut them apart.
I know, right?
The floor. Ooh, all right, good.
Good, thank you.
Oh, good, I love it, I'm good.
All right, so in the last month, we had nine incidents, four arrests, zero accidents, 52 citations, 370 calls for service, and state police assisted with four calls. As far as the badges for the tri-sentennial, I have ordered those. So as soon as those come in.
Perfect.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
I'll give you the shallow boxes that we're going to put them in, you can get on Amazon, you don't have to go to like Crown Control.
Sounds good, yeah. And then we want to do a picture with the artiste that.
Yeah, we wanted to do that before, we want to wait till 2027 and like, well, let's just, let's just say so.
Yeah.
As far as what we want to do.
I'm thinking before, let's give them, you know, some.
Because I have, I will say, here it comes.
Well, depends on whether or not you're going to be, I don't know if they're going to have a table at the December market, if you can find somebody.
Yeah, that, I think they want to. So the tri-sentennial committee wants to have a table.
So if you have there to sell, then you'd want the picture, that'd be nice.
Yeah.
Well, plug into you and we'll figure out who wants to do that.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So as soon as they come there.
Yeah.
Are calls for service down?
For this time of year, it's about the normal.
Okay.
Once it starts getting cold, less people are out driving around. Plus, the officers have been tied up doing other things and working on boards. I mean, even today, Jordan, he's at 10:30 this morning.
Yeah.
I mean, he's actually up for hours right there. So, you know what I mean? So it depends on what kind of calls come in, get them tied up.
Yeah.
So. The other thing I gained was from these key box that has some games where you suck that out on Hackleboro. The, that was from, let's see, 11:04 to 11:13. It ends at 2:03 AM, but the battery died. So that's why I saw that. So 1,197 cars.
Geez.
Fastest speed was 58, closest view was seven, again, seven is probably Amazon or something like that, or maybe. Yeah, or it could be.
I don't know where the camera was, if it was up by Sunset Hill, I don't go there that much.
So it was Sunset Hill about, let's say, 300 yards. Straightaway on the dirt. Yeah, it's that straightaway dirt road, and we needed a straightaway.
Yep, yep.
So enforceable violations over 10 miles an hour, so people going 40 plus, you're looking at 2% speeding.
Okay.
All right, 13%, or 13 miles an hour over, 1% speeding.
Yeah.
So I would say not really a speeding issue on that road, you have a couple that are going over obviously drastically, but for the most part, not a real.
Yeah. Now, is that, even though it's a straightaway because it's dirt, does that make a difference in how fast they might have been going? Like, I know when they, you know, being at the other end of Hackleboro where it's paved and it's a downslope, you know, a lot of people come whipping through there, but.
I think it's going to make a difference as far as, yes, where it's freshly paved, people are probably going a little faster on that part of the road now.
Yeah.
We put this out while they were paving.
Oh, okay.
So right now, yeah, people might go faster on that newly paved portion. I think you'll see in the summer, anyone who motorcycle will go faster on that part of the road.
Yeah.
Cars, hit or miss. You know, it's not like, you get a motorcycle on fresh pavement, they're hitting the gas. Anybody that's ever rode a motorcycle will tell you, if you have fresh pavement, maybe open that up a little bit. Cars, they don't feel the difference that much. So. But again, different parts of Hackleboro, you're going to get different results.
Yeah.
You know, so if we borrow theirs again, or we end up getting our own, we can try it on different parts of Hackleboro.
At some point, it'd be curious to see again if it's doable without, you know, making it a hardship to check Hackleboro closer to the center.
Correct, that was my original thought, that we were going to put it down here, but then we already went on that paving.
Yeah, yeah.
People are going to slow down for that, so we can get closer towards.
Yeah, no, this is, this is good to know, but.
Yeah, that's what I like about this part of it, because there was a little pin drop of where it was.
Yeah, no, this is great.
Kind of nice.
But the, but the way the information's broken down is really good, very helpful. Great.
Cool. All right, can we notice? Next sheet.
All right, appreciate it.
Have a good day, stay safe.
Thank you.
John?
Pretty impressed, 58 on my dirt roads, I need to.
I want to know who's that, that's, that's pretty astonishing.
I'm just trying to think how you get 58, which direction you're coming, where's that going 58 right there?
I don't know, and it wasn't me.
It took some doing.
Nice, okay.
We're supposed to be shipping plastic tomorrow.
Cool.
You have to pay to ship it. It's good to see it going.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting the loader go down south, it's currently down there, hopefully being worked on.
Yeah.
Picture, pavement's down, see that, load spread, I put grass seed in that, come up next spring hopefully.
Yeah.
Some of my trucks are set up for plowing, because I don't have any drivers for them, but be ready for it. And the 24th will go to five days a week.
Yeah, anybody right now, John, working part-time?
Roy.
Yeah, I thought.
Comes in two days.
Okay.
And when we go to five days, he'll drop some hours, so we're hoping to come in for an afternoon and pick them up.
Gotcha, okay.
I told him, come in whatever hours he wants to work.
Yeah, we got the work, so. All right.
That's about where I'm at.
All right.
Hackleboro looks real pretty, the entrances look real good. Do you come back and do like the edge along the long stretches of edge where there's another nice new pavement?
If it's a deep edge, yeah, I'd like to put three-quarter in there. But we'll type for that, I'm currently a couple low shy of finishing Amsworth.
Okay.
But, yeah, back in the month, I have a couple spots to do in it.
Okay, good, thank you, otherwise it looks real pretty.
All right, thanks.
Ready.
Rachel, good timing.
Really?
Yeah, sure, so.
Sam, he's coming, though.
Sam, Sam, this is our live, our first phone.
You fall, I'm, geez, I had to close up the light. Thank you, thank you. Hello, if you want.
Hello.
Hello, hello. Great news to report. Just always. Collaboration with the COCC on the food drive is now around 710 items donated to the lab food pantry. And that was an example of one of our collaborations, and we still read the code of law, with my New Hampshire Library Association and my New England Library Association hat on. If you're hearing from other municipalities about House Bill 273, it is now, House Bill 214 is a law, and this is pursuant to minors, parents' access to minor child library records. I'm just bringing this to you as just, as a courtesy when you hear from other municipalities and select board. Some libraries in the state do their patron orders differently. Alton Public Library has a family patron count, so that the children's materials that they have checked out are made available because the parents are ultimately responsible financially for those things. This is a challenging bill, it was one that I asked personally to the governor to veto, and this one just got biased. I'm just here to tell you that it's really not going to affect group bar libraries much because of just the way that we hold our patron counts. We've always been very careful to, to secure everyone's rights. If you hear about it, I can give you more information on it, but it's been what I've been working on a lot with New Hampshire Library Association and New England Library Association. Our storage and space continues to be an issue. We will probably have to do another inventory in January just because we have so many books and so many lovely donations from, from all sorts of people. But we will do a short inventory in January. And then last year I did that at the same time as Martin Luther King. So I think that's something we'll be looking to do in January. Still waiting for Peter Kalatas on the gutter repair, but he has been communicating with me. And Nick is still coming to do some paint touch jobs. I realize that these are all inside jobs, that these guys are probably faking for cold season, right?
Indoor gutters, you have indoor gutters.
Indoor gutters, well, these are not real fake jobs.
Yeah.
And being married to a carpenter, I know that these are like the little things, and so they'll be a choice eventually. But we have Paul Express, we have Mrs. Claus, and we have a full year of Alton Public Library Speaker Series calendar that I'll go through with Cal and Mary. You okay?
Oh, that was just me.
Okay.
But anyway, that leads me to another thank you for time call usage, a great deal. And another big thank you for Cal and Mary. You have their library, just as the president of New Hampshire Library Association, I hear a lot about how libraries have a hard time processing their payrolls and their invoices. And we don't have that here at all. Mary and Cal and I work very nicely together, our duties. So it does, it doesn't go without saying, because it's quite, quite a wonderful thing that we're able to negotiate through that and that the library doesn't have a bookkeeper. And the library doesn't have its own payroll agent. And so we are lucky enough to get through at staffing levels that we now have because we rely heavily on the town office, so thank you.
All righty. Good to know.
Yeah.
Because without that, you would have to have another, your current staff wouldn't be able to do it. You'd need a separate bookkeeper slash payroll.
It would be tough, it would be a whole different dynamic. So, and, and some libraries do it, not many. But it also comes from the fact that, as you know, we're separate from the town. And a lot of libraries really seize on that and say, we're not, we'll let the town see our stuff. So a lot of libraries are hesitant to let the town see their financials. Where our situation is quite the opposite. Like, Mary and I work a lot every day that she's working to figure out, I know by my notes, we have it all reconciled. So that, that, I don't know how we'd work without that.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
And a lot of libraries do it differently, so.
Yeah.
And it's those things that, you know, I don't take for granted ever, that you may not understand what some libraries do and carry the different. So that was what I mentioned.
Good to know, thank you. Thank you for your thank yous.
Thank you. That newsletter, pronto.
Guess you saw my note today.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thank you. All righty.
All right. Thank you, Sam.
Thanks.
Thanks, Senator.
It's three minutes, Sam. Fine.
Just, the fire department did send a report.
Oh, that's right.
It's done, we'll make it tonight, but did provide with a foot and fork.
Yeah.
Yours too. Nice job.
Yeah, I think there was a long winded bench.
Got an outline.
Yeah. Fairness.
Oh. Brush fires on anything?
Yes. Yeah, which one, I'm adding, very steep hill, right, right on the river.
Wow.
And I haven't heard any, I was at two out of the three, I believe. And there's another part, you know, for Kenner, fairly large fires.
And, and it says under investigation, does they, they're still trying to figure out how they started?
How they started, exactly right.
Okay. And is this new freedom propane leak, is that different than the one when the tree fell on the light?
That's the one.
Oh, this is, okay.
That's the one. Yeah. We are working on the emergency operations grant project. We have a vendor that we've selected and have been working with the chief on the grant application. We should have that done by the end of next week.
Great, thank you.
Good deal. And it's probably worth mentioning, although I think people have gotten to it, that the burn ban has been lifted by the governor.
Yeah.
But just a reminder that burn permits are still required. And as always, still seeking new members.
Yeah.
And then else, I think that's actually kind of covers it, so.
What, is the LEOP project, what you were just talking about?
That's the emergency operations, yeah.
That's a benefit, that's right.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then we want to do some signing, sure.
How long do we need to leave that here in Oakland? Just out of curiosity, do they usually stay open for, how long?
All right, please. All right, first item.
Excuse me.
Looks to be a consensual manifest in the amount of $98,389.54.
All right, so moved.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. Speak to the Google dollars.
So, I think there might be a check there that they didn't want to sign. Okay, I'll look for it.
Is this?
Thought I saw under for all of us to sign or just one, okay. Keep going, is there a check in there? I thought I saw.
I see a receipt.
It's there.
I don't remember. Oh, wait, there it is, void, training not attended.
Oh, okay, all right, that was, that was, all right. I saw the check in there, I wasn't sure if we needed.
There is a check, not two seconds.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, next. Payroll, yeah, payroll manifest in the amount of $59,936.23. Yeah.
Uh, so moved.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next is a letter to the Senate Commerce Committee from the Select Board. We discussed this with Senator last meeting, right?
Yes.
And it's urging them to vote no on House Bill 639, the cryptocurrency bill. And I think we just need to sign, can't write us right down. It's good for signing autographs, it's a.
Very famous one.
That's it. All right, next item is a municipality land use change tax bill. And it is for 201 Baptist Road. Andy has a little note explaining why. And it looks, Cal, do we sign in just the?
Just the one spot.
Today is the 17th.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Yes, she's always very, very good with the explanation.
Yeah.
So appreciated.
It sounds better when we sign on the table, because.
All right, last item is an interfund transfer from the transfer station upgrade capital reserve fund into our operating account. The amount is $5,976.80, which represents the amount paid to Ares Engineering for the feasibility study.
Ah, so moved.
Second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Can I see it leaves a balance of a little over $1,200? Do we have anything that we can do with that?
No, because that was a warrant article for that specific purpose.
Yeah.
So if any unexplained funds roll back into the job.
Okay.
But if there's any further work, like questions or stuff to Ares that incur additional cost, we could use it for that?
We would have to use it, we could, we'd use it for that.
Okay, I can see that happening.
Yes, very possible. I confirmed things with George.
Okay, good.
Talk, you know, done some emailing, there was some numbers that were incorrect on the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
And they haven't told us for that, he's just made a few changes that I don't know.
All right, and it looks like, Cal, are there minutes?
I didn't give you copies, there are just a couple choices.
Okay, all right, so if you want to just go over those.
Okay. The first significant change is on line 46, it says that Mr. Day explained that his security cameras should have at least used, used to patrol the area 40 to 50 times per week, should have been per year. And then later on line 88, Ken and Fire Chief Kamash, but today they have finished the application for the grant, they've finished drafting the application. On line 107, Bob Steenson suggested warning homeowners before the switch, just adding off that sentence since LED lighting is noticeably brighter. On line 122, their 2026 rates are not out yet, but they are anticipating an eight to 35% increase depending on the experience of the group. Just adding after experience parentheses claims history, if anybody doesn't know what that is.
That would be me, I didn't know.
And then after, on line 151, after the explanation about Chief Kamash's plan to switch the cars around and get a new pickup, adding a sentence that says this plan is significantly cheaper than buying a new rescue truck. Is that, is rest, new rescue truck accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. That'll convey not a pickup.
That is correct. Yeah, yes.
And that, oh, one more, on line 301, historically the transfer station is understaffed, how are department employees will fill in, but that is no longer an option, changing it to, but that is not an option at this time. Because it can be an option, it should be an option, yes, okay.
It will be an option.
So those are all the changes.
All right, I'll move the minutes as amended.
I will second that.
All those in favor, aye?
And do we have, we don't have any non-public minutes to advance, right?
Um, I didn't finish them.
Oh, so next time we'll, okay.
I see tax rate is inserted, we're going to talk about, can I? Sure, what was that, have a chair, maybe? Yeah, yeah, all right. All right, so I will move that we close the public hearing regarding the floodplain ordinance.
I will second that.
All those in favor, aye? And then I will move that we sign the resolution to adopt the new FEMA maps and flood insurance study.
Yes, I will second that.
All those in favor, aye? Cal, we're signing that tonight or in a future meeting?
It's signed right now, it's in that title.
Yes.
Yeah, sign it, please.
Perfect.
Just out of curiosity, who would come, what? Who might show up at a public hearing to say something about that?
Someone with property in the function, exactly.
But they would speak probably for it, yes? Again, I was.
Don't know.
Oh, I'm just curious, I was.
I'm sure there's something where I predict that.
No, that's true, there, there isn't, but I was wondering who might not want that, so.
You don't know?
FEMA also does their own public hearings about it, so.
Yeah.
This is not the only night where somebody could talk to them or spoken about it.
It's always curious what, what, what might come up.
I used to live in a subplane, followed all this very, very closely, because it really does that.
Did you ever flood?
Uh, no, not even close, actually, which was a whole long story.
But good.
Yeah, yes, exactly. All right, that's that, so we want to talk about tax rate?
We can do that.
Okay.
So you each got one of those. I was going to say, by the way, where did you get tax rate from, because it doesn't say on mine. You got the special one, all right. I was like, I don't, I think I'm looking at it.
It's just a last, almost a last minute item.
Okay, we'll take it, what's up? Do we have a sign to look at?
We have preliminary tax rate, you should have this stuff.
All right, so we're getting there.
There you go.
So the tax rate is $21.71, which is down almost a dollar from last year.
Yes.
And so the different columns that you see are amounts that you. amounts that you could contribute from unreserved fund balance if you wanted to, to reduce the tax rate further. It shows what the tax rate would be. Um, the max retained and the min retained are the DRA's recommendations. Like they recommend that you retain a maximum of seventeen percent of your budget in unreserved fund balance and a minimum of five percent, so, um, these are the two hundred, five hundred, eight hundred are examples of how much you could, how much that would reduce the rate. Um, that kind of thing, so.
And last year we did five hundred, yes.
Last year we did five hundred and that's how it got down to twenty-two sixty-eight, because I think it was gonna be like twenty-three something.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was twenty-four, yeah.
So you don't, if you contribute nothing, it's gonna be twenty-one seventy-one, which is less than it was last year.
Right.
Um, or you could contribute something and reduce it even further.
Right. So certainly, I'm, I'm thinking we should contribute something. First of all, we are over what the DRA recommends, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so I think we should contribute something. And I think, you know, we need to be mindful that other entities are, are raising their tax rates, so.
Do we need to decide this now or do we do this?
Yes.
Oh, tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
Trying to set a tax rate, so you can get the tax bills out.
Alrighty then.
Do we have to?
Yeah.
I could put on my official glasses for this.
I mean, I'm, I'm looking at five hundred thousand and thinking that kind of puts us in the middle of what DRA recommends we have, right? Any recommendations, Ken?
Well.
Alright, so.
We, we are in a very good, good financial picture.
Yeah.
Um, it certainly doesn't hurt to help on our residents, uh, that's what I'm thinking, just looking at this. Just keep in mind, we have a four hundred ninety thousand dollar one that's gonna be coming up.
Yeah.
I'd err more on the side of two hundred.
But, um, again, I mean, our, our unreserved fund balance is, is in pretty good shape. Um, we do have a county and school payment coming up in, uh, December, the first of December, which will be just over a billion dollars.
Yeah.
Um, total. Uh, we did, uh, one of our CDs, our five hundred thousand dollar CD matured. We made about fourteen hundred dollars in a month.
Okay, nice.
It's worth it. We still have another one that's gonna mature on the fourteenth of December.
Yep.
Um, so certainly we, we could afford to do five hundred thousand.
What's the difference, okay, hold on, tax bill, alright, here it is, you've already got it.
Yeah.
I wanna see the difference.
Also the tax.
Yeah, the, the.
For the properties.
So the difference between if we kicked in five hundred thousand versus two hundred thousand on a four hundred thousand dollar property is really like
Roughly four hundred.
Or in bucks.
Three hundred.
Yeah, three hundred, which you'd pick up if you saw on the street, but for sure. I.
Calvin, thoughts?
Yeah, I think you'd be responsible to get something back, I just don't know uh, what big expenditures we have or what. You know, it's nice to have money in the bank in case anything happens.
Right, but.
I mean, in the middle, that five hundred doesn't look bad, it doesn't, I mean, it gives everybody, you know, starts from a, what, two, two hundred fifty to three hundred dollar difference, depending where you, where you fit.
Ken, I'm reading this correctly, if we take five hundred thousand, we still have a billion three eighty-five, correct?
Correct. What'd you guys do last year?
Five hundred.
Because of the big school increase. Eight hundred thousand. You could also split the difference into three hundred, four hundred, and you don't have to choose one of those.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
What else, um, is this still taking into consideration, but we may be showing up for insurance and things of that? I mean, just, you know, looking at the context of where this money is sitting. Do we need some of it? Do we need more of it to actually take care of, um, town bills?
So this is, this is the unreserved fund balance. So this is money that we have that is not spoken for in the operating account.
Right.
As soon as you approve this tax rate, tomorrow we'll get Mandy Anne to do the warrant and then Sam can issue the bills, so
Yeah.
the unreserved fund balance will start going back up, yeah.
I don't, I don't know why I hesitate, I mean, you're right, the numbers look good, we've got good money in the bank, I don't know why I hesitate, only that we did it last year under kind of extreme circumstances. We don't quite have those extreme circumstances, so I kind of wouldn't want to get into that habit of doing it five hundred thousand all the time, but I have no, um.
Well, is, is that school rate, the proposed one, is that pretty, do you think that's gonna be accurate?
Uh, this.
Prelim, or whatever that is?
This is a hundred percent accurate and for the twenty twenty-five rate, so this is not including what's gonna happen next year for the school, so the school care assessment and like any other big expenses the school or others might have come up, um, are not included in this, so next year it could be also a big jump.
Right, well, if you, if you take that into account, we'd be better off not buying it down that high now to have it in the, in the kitty for next year in case we need to have a bigger buydown to try to keep people, or know.
Well, next year you're also doing the revow, so that will work, because we're at seventy-six percent
Yeah.
or something like that, yeah, so that'll help.
Did you weigh in on what you think? You said five, you thought five.
I still think five.
Yeah, it leaves plenty in the, in the fund.
Yeah, and that, you know, I, I don't, unless you disagree, I don't think we should.
No, I, we could comfortably
Yeah.
uh, do the five and, and, um, again, it's like, I think we're in a really good financial picture right now.
Right.
Um, if you looked at what is owed in taxes is for, for what our tax burden is, we're, we're doing pretty good with that.
Yeah.
Um, so the economy seems to be chugging along, um.
And I just, I don't want us sitting on a lot of money while our residents are paying higher taxes.
That's really what I think.
Right, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, so long as, um, uh, you who knows the financial picture better than I can say that that's comfortable.
Mm-hmm.
That, that to me is, is good. Um, if the town's in a comfortable position and we can help the residents, I would, I would agree with that, it's not it's not that much of a difference between the two hundred and the five hundred. But, but it, but it adds up, so.
Yes, it does.
I would support you in that.
Calvin?
I'm okay with five hundred, I think that you could definitely use it.
Either motion or, okay, so I'll make a motion that we use five hundred thousand from the unreserved fund balance.
Two.
Two.
Or the twenty-five.
A little bit twenty, yeah, twenty, twenty.
Five.
Five.
Tax rate.
Can I second that?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Five hundred thousand, so that means the tax rate will be twenty dollars and forty-nine cents then?
Uh, yep, yeah. Right. Uh, let me know if, and why don't you let people know that we just did that?
I think we just did.
I think we just did, but if I can.
So then, so we should tomorrow, um, Cal's gonna let Mandy know, she's gonna prepare the warrant, and we have a work session tomorrow night.
Yeah.
And, uh, we will ask you guys to sign the warrant tomorrow night, Sam will get everything in line and
Okay.
we'll ask you guys to sign the warrant tomorrow night.
Yep, sounds good. Alright.
Alright.
Very good.
And, um, there's a fifty thousand dollar overlay um, that was recommended by Mandy, this is earlier from the MS one, it's just, we can change it, I guess.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was that? Fifty thousand dollar overlay is, um, for just in case the ever source argues about the
Oh, 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 okay.
assessment.
Yeah. Alright.
But that's not, oh, don't worry about overlay, that's what that is.
Right.
That's just an FYI, because I'm filling it out right now, I'm submitting it to the DRA right now.
Alright, so we've set a tax rate.
So she'll give us a five hundred in the morning and then
Yeah.
I'll call you guys and I'll call Mandy and Sam and we'll roll that out tomorrow.
Sounds good, alright.
Happy birthday, Amber.
Yeah. Alright, Ken, uh, the second to the last municipality in the state to receive our tax rate.
From CAP, there's three of them, so.
Interesting, these guys are some good at paying taxes.
Alright, are we on to old business?
We are.
Alright, HB three fourteen.
Um, so I forwarded you a few days ago the message from NHMA, this is about the, um, restricting
Free speech, oh, right.
Yeah.
Newsful officials, right?
Yes, and counting, logging.
Yeah.
Accounting it, accounting things as logging, um, so we got a reply from NHMA, we did not get a reply from Jose Camro um, even though I did send it to him as well. Um, so we could wait till next year and see if this goes to the full house or you could send a letter now to the Legislative Administration Committee. Um, there hasn't been an update since she sent this, because there was a line here saying like they were gonna have a session the very next day, but that was also non-public, so we still haven't argued what they're talking about or what they're doing, thinking.
Yeah.
So you could send a letter now, or later, or both.
And say, well, we're still thinking about it, we should have sent it now.
Yeah. Why don't we, Calvin, what do you think?
I'm looking at something here.
Yeah, but, and, and maybe later, you know, depending on what we hear, we still follow.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, then I'll draft a letter and, um, give it to you guys for Sunday.
Perfect, thank you, Calvin. Ready?
Alright, are, are we at the point, do we have anything else before we talk about highway department?
Select board rep reports.
Oh, that's right, I was about to kind of start a little.
I should bold that one, no, this is.
I don't.
I actually saw it this time, I didn't, I look, I didn't have my folder just.
Am I the, I am the select board rep to tricentennial?
Yes.
Okay, I always forget that.
Yeah.
It's just we, we share information and duties, I think. So tricentennial committee, uh, had a table set up at the indoor frontage market. Uh, I think it was very well received. Um, they sold license plates. Um, they had, um,
Stickers?
Stickers, thank you.
Hand crocheted sheet.
Very cute, yeah, that's very.
And the information that upcoming T-shirts.
Right, which also look great, so, you know, I think, I think they're gonna be a big seller, so, um.
They make runner bots.
Almost, which is great.
Yeah.
So, and the plan, I believe, assuming we get personnel is to be at the December
Yes.
indoor frontage.
If we can find somebody to table, who's not me.
Right.
But could be you, let's, let's sort of, right?
That's true.
Just saying.
Right, think of anything else for tricentennial?
No.
I think that's, that's enough news.
Planning, planning continues.
Yeah, and the stickers.
Oh, and the movie is going.
Oh, that's right, yeah, the shooting of the movie, which, um, I think, are we still looking for extras?
I don't know, all I know is that Russell Field shaved his face so he could be Governor Wentworth, which I, I didn't even recognize him in the store, so, uh, things are going forward.
Yeah? Cool, alright, um, planning, uh, the, uh, exit eighteen housing development was approved for twenty-six units, one of which is a duplex. There were, I believe, fourteen conditions of approval, so I will go to each one of those, but, um, biggest thing I can make up.
And they'll be back to the, uh, planning board this next?
Uh, maybe, I, I'm not sure what they have to do between, I think they've gotta get permits, alteration of trading permits, and that was one of the conditions.
Yeah.
Um, which can be a, a bit of a process.
Yeah, I didn't write, I believe they'll be back, so, they will find out. Okay.
That's all I can think of for planning. I thought we was, it's really been, like, the biggest item in the last couple of years.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I can.
Ready, you want to go?
I'm pretty straightforward, alright, rent department, this is Randy. I can't, I can't remember days to save my life. Soccer season wrapped up and Halloween, there were successes, the tree will be strong on November twenty-fourth, which is next Monday.
Oh, good.
Um.
How's it gonna happen this year? You're gonna dangle for me, uh?
Word on the street is I don't have to, but you're ready in case I have to, um,
Where are hardest this to?
So Brian's gonna bring his, his truck.
I'm still, yeah.
And then the lighting ceremony, um, will be November twenty-fifth. And.
Twenty-fifth? No, twenty-ninth.
Well, she wrote twenty-fifth, I believe in twenty-eighth, you probably know dates by memory.
I think it's the twenty-ninth.
Um, they're gonna have all their receipts in by December first for the budget, and that will all be submitted. Yeah, the twenty-ninth, she, she wrote wrong, but I just handed messages. So they were good, they did that, we had a meeting, uh, public meeting last month. And went over all the little stuff, they're, they're moving forward fine, they're looking to, uh, repair the shed, the soccer shed down at the school. They're just trying to figure out if it's the town or the school's responsibility.
Gotcha.
So they're in the process of that, with, uh, building some grounds. Um, HDC, uh, what have we got? Not much really went on, uh, side of truth.
Is cancelled, is?
I don't know yet.
Yes.
It is, it is confirmed and cancelled, yeah, they had a member resign, so now they're back down, so they're gonna search again for members. Um, but I don't believe it was here in this month, so it's, okay. Um, and the ag permission, there was a last meeting for the year until next spring.
Yeah.
They handed out all the seeds for the tricentennial tree project.
Mark.
So everybody has a billion seeds at their house in the ground right now, hopefully they all turn into trees for the spring.
Uh, we got our allotment from Mark on Saturday.
Yeah, I think seventy-five walnuts. We got a selection, um, and they are uh, still going over the farm, active farm list and trying to establish that. And they're taking a pretty good survey, potentially over the winter, you know, so, pretty well key. Um, I think, HDC, that's it for me.
Okay, good. Um, let's see, I'll start with conservation. They had, um, conservation's chugging along, they've been, you know, putting signs out at Scudak, mowing, going on at Riverland, uh, Robert Spife Conservation Area, there's a bunch of stuff going on there about, um, signage, uh, the Kinders Garden that they have to figure out what to do with. Beavers are doing things and, uh, cutting paths, so that's, they're just all basic, their basic management projects are still going on. Uh, they've got a subcommittee that's working on a wetlands ordinance. Um, they've been making, um, some progress, you know, either they have these two members and not those two members, or those two and not those two. So they're going for, but they've, they've done a lot of work and they're proceeding on a, uh, some sort of a, a draft wetlands ordinance, a setback ordinance. Um, we did, um, they did weigh in, uh, the blockchain and digital currencies opposing the bill. Um, there was a study, um, that they got from DES about the new pond, about new pond, the total daily maximum load. The question about that, which was interesting, is, it's like a seventy-five page report, which was really tough to read because a lot of it was, uh, equations, but be that as it may, um, the question was, part of the problem with the, the load on the pond is the septics. Septics around the pond, and what they were not clear about is who is responsible for implementing improvements to those septics. So if it's Sherwood Forest and they're a private community, are they responsible, is the town responsible, if it's gotten up to the D E S level? Uh, who actually can say, okay, this needs to change? So, um, Kelly is going to contact D E S and learn more about what the next steps are, but just to get on everybody's radars that the, the, the. D E S has weighed in that it's, um. The, that the water body is impaired, so, you know, how, how do we, how do we go about dealing with that, and Kelly's gonna find out. Um, and they've got, you know, a couple of workdays planned, um, and continuing efforts to reach out to landowners in town. To see if they wanna conserve their land, which they, um, they have a lot of. A wide range of people that they wanna contact, so they, they chug along. Um, energy committee, um, both energy and uh community power still. Looking for members, uh, two, two people left the energy committee meeting, I don't know if that, I reported on that last time, but they had two members uh resigned, so. That membership needs is like top of the list, um, they were working with, uh. Ken, they went up and, and they walked through the municipal center, talking about the, um, replacing L E D lights. Oh, Jack Eltramo says he's gonna reach out to Jack Dudek of uh World Energy Services and see if he can get a report from when they walk through with you, because. They hadn't heard. They didn't say anything about it, so. He's gonna follow up with them, so, window dressers, big success. Uh, L E D streetlights, we know what happened there, we've got the two in the center, three, four in the center.
Three in the center.
Three in the center are getting replaced, um. But speaking of L E D lights, again, um, the energy committee wants to work more or find out more from. Affinity. Um, about the, um, perhaps doing L E Ds in the municipal center, we know, we reported on that. Um, they are also having a heat pump session, information session, on November eighteenth in the town hall at seven P M. Um, they're gonna have a panel and it's all about how to use your heat pumps, anybody wants to know or come or talk about it. And they are also, um, investigating, uh, Ron Lattalian attended a C Pacer. Commercial property assessed clean energy and resiliency conference, um. And C Pacers basically a loan fund for commercial entities to use towards energy and resiliency projects, they're gonna find out more what this means. The town might have to have an ordinance to say that we're part of this, uh, the town doesn't have to do anything other than say. Apparently that people can use this program. But I was quite unsure what it meant for the town, what did you say it's like, C Pacers, like, it was a, another?
So my understanding is it would be similar, you, you do an overlay. To allow for commercial districts.
Yeah.
It is similar to what a TIF, a tax increment financing.
That's the word I was looking for, yeah.
So, the. Developer.
Yeah.
Or customer could uh sign up for this and um have reduced costs, you know.
But the town doesn't do it, it's through this program, we just have to allow this program to happen in the town, correct? They're, they're coming back with a lot more information about that, so that was pretty much, um, that was pretty much the energy committee. They've got another, um, educational assess, uh, program set up for January sometime, but I'll talk more about that when we.
And actually, before you go on, that sort of triggered, um. We had, uh, talked about, we have two streetlights that are on state roads.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, and, and we're paying, as I understand, for the lights there, I guess, do we wanna continue to pay for those lights?
So I had a conversation with Beth earlier.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I, I have, I have, was gonna update on some of the stuff, but I, uh.
Hands on it.
Yeah, okay.
Contacted the state, division five or district five, um. Um, sent an email, didn't hear back, did a phone call, talked to people down there, they gave me the voicemail of their district maintenance supervisor. Um, that was last Wednesday, I have not heard back.
Okay.
Uh, I, the, the lights were supposed to be done last week.
Yeah.
They didn't, it was a communication breakdown with Unitil, um, but they're gonna be done this Thursday, um. I talked to Unitil, the representative from Unitil, and said we are only playing on these.
Yeah.
We weren't gonna do the ones for the state.
Yeah.
And I'm gonna send an email, probably tomorrow or Wednesday, and say that we're doing these. We're not gonna do the ones for the state.
Yeah.
And when we get our next bill from Unitil, we will forward it to them, the state.
Yep.
So.
Thank very much, we paid for it for twenty years.
Right, at least, at least.
Yeah. Your turn for the next twenty.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's streetlights. Uh, Community Power, Edgar, we missed you the other night, uh, Edgar was busy doing school board, yes, so, um. We had a guest who was Jackson Caspari, who was the member services rep from, um, Community Power, uh, New Hampshire. And he basically came, I've got a whole slide, I'm waiting for the slideshow to be forwarded, they can send it wherever they want, but it was, it was pretty much just. Explaining the whole program again for anybody who might not know what it was, and that they have a couple of new features, like, you know, a mail thing that people can sign up for, get on their mailing list, things like that. Um, and plus all the legislative concerns that, um, C P C and H has dealt with and what they're, what they're doing. So it was really, really good to see with him, so I'll include a link to the slideshow, um. The, our question was, um, one of our big questions was that. Of the people, I wanna see if I get this right, of the people who currently do not participate in Community Power for whatever reason. Fourteen percent of those, we wanna know if there's a way to encourage them to opt into Community Power. Um, with the goal of, you know, getting more people, you know, in the, in the program, and then eventually, uh, when we have the adder rate. Um, you know, again, that, more people that we have in the program, the more the adder rate will go back to the town. But our biggest question to, um, Jackson Caspari was, when will the adder rate be available of all rate levels? Because right now, if you opt in and you opt up to the highest level because you wanna support, you know, sustainable, um, eh, uh, energy, uh, production. You can't, you don't get the adder rate, you'll only get it for Canterbury and Basic, and he. He must have spoken about ten minutes worth of why this was a complicated thing to have happened, they're working on it, they're, it's absolutely on their list of things to do, so. Uh, we're hopeful to, uh, get some action on that, um. Oh, and, uh, just as a note, he did mention that we should ask again to see what the town's balance is in our, uh, adder account before town meeting. Cause there might be more funds that we could get.
Hmm, correct.
Um. And we do need to, and I, I talked to Cal about this, we need to just come up with some sort of wording for a warrant article, so that we don't have to wait. To accept the funds, uh, next time, cause at the moment it's just sitting in the general fund. I found out today from Cat that we are actually, that thousand dollars that we worded it so that that would be raised by taxes.
Hmm.
The P R A disagrees that we worded it that way, so we can take a thousand dollars from that adder funds. To put in, and then the four, two hundred leftover, um, that'll actually be the next one.
Okay.
Okay, whatever, whatever works, that's fine, um. And then the, um. Can I put this in here? There's a, there's a way that we need to, we need to discuss how to let new residents who move into town, or, or. Somebody such as yourself, who moves houses within town but sets up a new, uh, Unitil or EverSource account. How, how do they, when do they actually get refreshed or brought into Community Power?
Mm-hmm.
So there's different ways to do that and, uh, um. See, uh, the Community Power will be, uh, bringing wording to a future select board meeting, um. The, the current wording is, um. Canterbury Community Power recommends the select board request that Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire refresh utility customers. Uh, in our Unitil and EverSource services area monthly, um, regardless of the default prices. Did have a conversation, is, should be weighing in, just having it when Community Power is low. Than the utility rates, or just for everybody, and, and we, we, um, the committee, well, we. The committee said that they thought that everybody should just go on regardless, because that's how we voted the town at the beginning.
That's what I thought, I was thinking of, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did, so, but now we, we, for the new people coming in, you could do it differently, but we decided to keep it all the same.
Yeah.
Or they did.
Okay.
Uh, and that's it, just community outreach, they're going to continue, are they working on the mission statement, since the committee has changed so much since its original. Uh, formation. Uh, and that's it for Community Power, still looking for members.
Yeah.
Um, in a big way.
I think you could say that about every committee this time.
We did have one new member for energy.
Good.
Uh, which was great.
Yeah.
I think that's it for that.
Alright. Um.
They have a few updates.
Yeah, touch it.
They said that. Uh, the bond, uh, application was approved by Von, which bond bank.
Yeah.
Uh, we have some paperwork to do and we'll be bringing them, same for you, sign next meeting.
Okay.
Um, the lights at the highway department, where they were waiting on parts.
Yep.
Um, he's been bugging his supplier and he said, I'm trying to get him to get there so we can get lights in the highway garage. Um, the Sam Lake garage, the interior was framed, the rough electrical was done. Um, and the signing will be done either the end of this week or beginning of next week.
Good.
Uh, the electrical inspection, rough electrical inspection is done, so they can, can slate now.
Yep.
Um. And I, let's see, participated in the second energy audit up at the municipal building. And, uh, also met with the company, uh, that provides the security cameras at our town office. And we went up to the municipal building, we put the cameras up there in two thousand and seventeen. And the police have been having some problems with the vendor. Uh, they'd like to add a couple cameras and the vendor hasn't been very responsible, responsive. So, uh, I contacted the company we deal with here, we went up and did a tour of the building, um. They can't use the existing hardware, I'm giving that.
Correct.
Uh, they did say that the lifespan on those cameras is typically around ten years, so we're approaching that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, they are going to give us a, uh, estimate and. See what it is for the twenty six budget to see if we should do a warrant article for that or not.
Oh, so the, so the, uh, security camera company that does the municipal center is not the same as the one that does the Sam Lake.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that system up there, uh, the system we have here is cloud based, so you can log in any, from anywhere. Um, and see what's going on.
Yeah.
Uh, the system up there is a lot, so hardwired, um. Well, cameras are remote, they're not wired, but, but, uh, it's a, it's not a cloud base, so you can't log in from anywhere, so you can only view it from, from up there.
Yeah. With the system now at Sam Lake, if we lose the internet, do we lose the capability of each camera upload?
No, it's still, it's still records, um, but, but you can't log in from somewhere else again.
Yeah, no, okay.
You'd have to wait until you got internet back.
Yeah.
Till we see.
But we don't lose any, any recordings of any activity that might, yeah, right.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Okay. And when will they, they'll have those figures, we'll be able to.
So we're gonna, yeah.
Into this budget.
They're gonna give us an estimate before, um, I was kinda hoping for it today, but.
Yeah.
Uh, he said it'd be, it'd be the last, last, yes, there's, I know. I think that's it for updates.
Okay.
Um. We have highway department hiring.
Yep.
Um. First part, we can stay public.
Okay.
Um, and unless there's any questions that move into the realm of executive, then we can stay public for that.
Okay.
Uh, interviewed a candidate a couple weeks ago, the background checks and reference checks have, uh, gone very well. Um, I recommend that we hire, uh, John and I interviewed, um, again, I did the background and. Reference checks, everything looks good, um, I would recommend that we hire this, uh, gentleman, uh, his name is Charles LeMahieu. He lives in Concord, he has experience working on the highway department, and so I think, you know, he'd work on the.
Yeah, C D O.
He has a C D L, it's automatic restricted, but he has driven standard before and he's, uh, I talked to him last week and he is anxious to come to work for us and. Take one of our trucks, uh, and jump back into the standard and get qualified.
Any idea, cause that involves point man.
Oh, D N V.
Any idea how far out their schedule went?
We waited two months on Robert.
That's what I had heard they were.
Well, well, best.
Does he need more training, do you, do you have the expense to train him further for standard, or?
No, it's just, uh, roadwork with our, with our trucks.
Okay.
Um, we do have, uh, two seasonal people that have agreed to plow for us this winter, um, so. Um, and.
I hope.
We have Roy and if we hire Mr. LeMahieu and. We're.
Do we need a motion?
Um, yeah, to have a motion to, to hire, um, Mr. LeMahieu for the highway department.
Alright, I'll make that motion that we hire Robert LeMahieu for the highway.
Charles, Charles.
Pardon me. Yeah.
Um, so long as we, the people who know more about this than I agree, um, the references check, I would say yes, I second.
Almost in danger, aye?
Aye.
Welcome.
That is it for the public portion of the hiring. So, Zach, who said?
Yeah.
For the base.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Carol, which one are we, uh?
Uh, you're gonna want.
Which one?
A.